So I'll call this meeting to order and we'll start right with item two, discussion of responses to the four school window replacement project bids.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mark.
The bids came back pretty much where we expected them to be. I thought they might be a little bit lower, but the aluminum market right now is very volatile and that scared a lot of people.
I can't imagine why.
But if you look at the first highlighted item, diversity construction is the low bid for the elementary schools. And the last item on page one, Montagno Construction is the low bid for Lyman Hall. Now, today we met with both vendors and both vendors are qualified and will be able to do the work, understand the scope of the work, and understand the timeframe. So we expect to award these bids to these two vendors. Now, we did put out an addendum for school guard glass because there's obviously some interest in that. But there are a few things that everyone needs to understand. We are not replacing any windows that were installed from 1996 on. So the front of Lyman Hall, for instance, none of that glass is being touched. That was all replaced in 2007. Also, there are some considerations when you only, when you're only doing, you know, two, three, four locations, it's not the entire school system. If there's an interest in hardening, like just the entrance points, I would make an argument for that to be a separate project and that should encompass all facilities, not three or four. Typically, school construction in the state of Connecticut has not included a school guard or any other safety glass. You do find it on some new buildings, but existing buildings generally are not retrofitted. Our first floor windows, all of them, with very few exceptions, open. And that's a big problem when you're looking at this safety glass. You know, we do not have air conditioning in most of our facilities, so during warm weather, windows are open. So that negates any safety features that glass might have. So if you look at the next, the second column, there's the base bid and then there's add security glazing. You could see it would be just over $2 million to add school guard glass or some other similar product. School guard is a name, you know, a brand name. So if you're interested in doing that, that would probably change the scope enough to where this project would be delayed one year. It's not impossible, but there will be some design changes to make that happen. Any questions right now?
Karen.
Okay. What, explain about school guard or, you know, glass. What is the difference? What does that encompass?
The school guard glass has a laminate that's built into it that basically prevents it from being smashed or removed out of the pane, out of the window frame. It will, you know, it's not bulletproof.
Okay, that's, I was going there next.
No such thing being used in school systems. The only one that gets bulletproof glass, I think, is our president, and that's in his limousine. But typically, you don't find that. Bulletproof glass is thick and our buildings wouldn't even support it. This is very similar to the laminates that you see that can be added after the product's installed. And typically, if there was an interest in hardening, say, the entrances to the buildings, we would probably be looking at laminates because that can be added to the existing windows that are newer.
Does this resemble Plexiglas? What does this resemble? I'm trying to get an idea of what this is.
It's a plastic film and if you had it in bulk, it would probably be in a roll. Typically, it's rolled out, it's cut to size, and then either a mechanical stop is installed to hold it in place or an adhesive stop, a construction adhesive stop. Those components, different companies use different methods, but it has to stay stretched over the window, it has to be held in place. If, without the stops, it really wouldn't do anything at all.
So Mike, did you, are you outside Karen for now?
Yeah, I'm trying to envision this.
It's almost like a, I want to say like a tinted window type film over it, but without the tinting. And then they could either put stops or like a cork type thing around the beak.
How thick is this?
It's, I have a brochure, it's thin. There's a lot of different kinds, but six mils.
Okay, that gives me an idea at least.
But Mark, does it, an alternative to the laminate, though, is to get a particular window, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't shatter or whatever?
Correct. It can be done either with the glass or it can be done after the fact.
Right.
There are a lot of glass companies, if you add the film after the fact, they will avoid the warranty. But if you're just doing select areas, I don't see that as being a major issue to deal with.
Slight areas you do welcome.
If you're gonna, you know, if we put the standard glass in, say, the back entrance to Lyman Hall and you wanted to harden that area, that's a small area. So if that, if the company told us we voided the warranty by adding the film, I don't see that as being a major issue because the warranty is basically a warranty on the interstitial space between the two panes. That that space will stay, you know, intact and it will hold the gas that's installed in there so you don't get fogging. It's very rare that we've ever had dual pane glass fail. Most of the time, failures are caused by, usually happen in buildings that have been abandoned and not heated and cooled, you know, not, you're not maintaining any climate control. That's typically when those things fail.
So there is a safety glass that we could install in these entrances if we chose to?
There is. It would be, the project came in around $4.8 million, it would end up being about $6.8 million.
When did the renovation? We didn't do that in any of the buildings at all?
No, no. It's not, typically, it's not, it's the item that tends to get taken out of projects. There are pluses and minuses to almost every safety item we purchase. You know, when you put these windows in, you also have an entrapment issue because you cannot get out of the building as easily. You're only gonna be able to exit through doors and windows that you can open. You will not be able to punch these windows out to exit the building. And years ago, there was a big movement in this system to remove all the Plexiglas because at some point, they thought it was a good idea to put a lot of Plexiglas in because obviously, kids can't break it, right? We removed all that, but now that thinking has kind of changed. Fire departments understand that for certain reasons, we may want to, you know, put glass in that can't be knocked out.
I just have two more questions. The $6 million would be if we, you're estimating that as a cost to put in the safety glass across the system, the entrances, what?
No, that would just before these two projects that we're ready to move forward with.
Obviously. Now, when you have Cook Hill Highland, is it all the windows in the school or?
Not all, because when you look at Cook Hill, we have the portables that are not included in this project and we have the new areas like the library, and that's in the main entrance, and that's not included, so.
The windows in those, at Highland, the connecting hallways, those windows?
Connecting hallways.
The part that used to be open that we enclosed with the renovation?
I don't think so, because I don't think those windows are, I think they've stayed in place. Could be wrong about that, but it's, you know, a lot, there were a lot of windows changed in 2007 also with those renovations.
What is the protective film going to protect?
I'm sorry, but we do a Q and A, is item four on our agenda, so this, at this time, but please, I want you to ask your question if you could jot it down, so I don't want you to forget and I don't want you to think I'm being difficult. But right now, this is for board and then absolutely, I want to hear your question if you could just be patient and I really appreciate that. Yeah, Karen.
The entrances that we have now, can you explain what type of glass is there currently?
It's a standard safety tempered glass.
Okay.
You know, there is film to it and it is somewhat shatter resistant, but if you spray it with bullets or something, it will, it will come out of the panes, you know, there's no doubt about it.
Ray.
Some of the glass I noticed today, I was up there, it has.
Up where?
Chicken wire, I'm sorry, it's sheen. Looks like there's chicken wire between the layers.
That's no longer used. It's leftover from the original construction.
And that, that's not, why was the wire in there? Was that in there to hold?
It was to hold it in place mainly, it mainly had to do with fire protection as far as, you know, if you have a fire door, you would find that the glass in that fire door would normally have wire in it. That way, if you had flames hitting the door and the glass shattered because of the heat, it would stay in place and maintain your smoke barrier.
Now, this film, again, I have concerns, it's only a thin film, but because it's stretched, it makes it bulletproof.
It's not, bullets go right through it, but the glass stays in place.
So somebody can't like put a bullet through it then ram it and go through it?
Correct.
Any other board members? Pat, did you?
No.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. So I just want to, I know you said it, the date of the replacement is no earlier than, what was the date, Mark? 19?
We typically looked at windows that were installed prior to 1996.
1996.
There were a lot of renovations done in 96.
It's fine.
And if it was double pane glass and it was up to the energy standards, we did not include it in the project.
So I just want to make sure, and really, this is for kind of TV land, that people understand that when we talk about our elementary schools, it's for Cook Hill Highland and Parker Farms only. And then just Lyman Hall for the high school. So I think, I just, I'm concerned about equity in terms of what we're doing and then just planting that seed. And then the other question I have, and more so, just to remind people, these are considered bondable projects. Am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is being bonded. So my next question would be, have we talked to the mayor about, you know, is this for not in terms of even having this discussion? Is, has he been informed about the potential of the add-on for the security glazing? And what's that?
I haven't met with the mayor and depending on your decision tonight, I may not have to meet with the mayor, but if you decide you want this.
Gotcha.
I will have to go back and.
But I, also, I just want to say that, that's fine, that, and I'm not here to represent the mayor on any level, but again, for TV land, these are steps that we take that if the board's interest is to present that, you know, to go this route, that doesn't necessarily mean that's gonna happen. Is that a fair statement? So I just want to make sure people understand that. And I do worry about the equity issue. I know that these schools are being replaced because the need initially is there to replace the windows. But I worry about, you know, all our schools deserve, you know, if we're gonna go that route for security glazing, I don't know. I just don't know how that perception is and I worry about that.
Just, and the reason why we didn't have any action until the second, until after public comment.
Yes.
And we have a third item or a third number on the agenda.
Security.
Is we're gonna talk to you about the other measures and again, there's no action to be taken right now. This is discussion on this first item intentionally because one of the things that came up in our information that we gathered from teachers, administrators, parents, students, one of the items was to put the window film.
Right.
On all entrances of, or egress points of schools. So we do have, we wanted to share that with you. We're not saying that that's our top priority as an administration because I think, as some of you have pointed out, there are some, it's not necessarily seen as one of the most effective ways in terms of even the windows. There's always a challenge. This is, it was new to us this year because in the past, the window film or windows like this were not approved by the fire marshal. He did not agree with them. This year, in our security meeting, he said he would acquiesce on this if we chose to do it to the police chief, which was news to the committee. This was the first time we had heard that. But again, I just wanted to share that that's one of the items and we do have a cost, an estimated cost. None of these, these costs that I'll be sharing with you have been, you know, gone out to bid or anything like that, but just a cost as, for that too. So in terms of the equity issue, we were kind of expecting that.
Great. Not great, but okay. I don't, I don't want to rush board members, I want to make sure you guys have had a chance. Any questions, comments, concerns? I, I mean, we could always go back if questions arise certainly, but I just don't want, okay. Yeah, Karen?
Well, I'm looking at the document that you've given us, aside from these things, on the actual bid. And what is this bid exception noted for Montagno Construction? Could you explain that to me?
Where are you, Karen?
Page three and four. Or at least three. Whenever there's an asterisk, it makes me wonder.
That one went away real easy.
Oh.
Their exception was that they could not do both jobs.
Oh, okay.
And they only won one, so that solved that issue very quickly.
Okay, well, when I saw that, when I said bid exception noted, I want to know what that means, so, okay.
Yeah, we don't typically deal with bid exceptions, very rarely.
Okay.
Board members, okay to move on to the update on security information? And again, we can return to this if need be. Okay, so let's move on to, thank you, Mark, for that. Update on district security information.
If you want to pass the.
Absolutely.
So as was stated at the town meeting that we had a couple weeks back when we met, I shared that I would collect the information and gather it together from our district safety committee that received information from our teachers, our administrators, all of our staff. We had our, as I shared at that meeting, we had all of our administrators call, stand up faculty meetings or go out and visit different groups and grade levels. So this list represents that information as well as what we heard at the night of the actual community forum. So what we did, this is not in priority order, it just was kind of pulling it all together from the different sources, looking at the key items that have arisen in those conversations. The estimated costs are truly estimates with the exception of two, the one that's not, the two that aren't exceptions, or three, excuse me. The mental health professionals, because as you know, that is already in our budget. And so I just, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. The other ones that are not true estimates are the school resource officers. This would be for the high schools and the middle schools to start. This has been something we've been putting forward for the last several years. That includes, that's a police officer plus benefits.
So that's four?
That's four. And those are the real costs at this time. And again, as I explained, and I know many board members that had been on the board three years ago when we first broached this with the town council, it was determined that if we were going with a school resource officer, that it would come out of the, it would have to come through the police department's budget, not the school's budget. And I have actually, and I could share this data with you, but looking at our DURG, our district reference group, most of them, if not all of them, with the exception, the ones that we were able to get data, there were actually only one, two, three districts that paid, were paid for by the board of education. Everything else was paid for either in split, they were split by the board of ed and PD, or paid for purely by the police department. So there, that was that piece there. So that's a not an estimate. And the last one that's not an estimate would be the ALIS training, which we heard about, which we're 100% supportive of. So when you look at this list, these represent the ideas, so I'll just go by through it quickly. Mental health professional development, that would range for a variety of staff, across all of our staff, and really looking at bringing in-house trainers and also doing some professional development or some training for families. So not just making it about our staff, but offering community based on trauma and a variety of different topics that could lead to some difficulties for students and staff. Safety software, the most common one, but I couldn't put a name, but the most common one out there that districts are using is Gaggle. And it's basically a software, and Karen can explain this much better than I can, so I'm gonna turn it over to Karen.
Sure. So it's software that really can monitor our students' documents and drive and, in Google, and flag any particularly disturbing type of information. And it could be something involving self-harm or harm of others and it gets flagged and an alert goes out. So many schools are using this now and especially with Chromebooks and one-to-one and everything else, so.
The school resource officers, again, we are recommending, and I know our administrators are recommending, resource officers over just armed security. The difference between a resource officer, as many board members knows, is that they become part of the community of the school. And while they are armed, they develop those relationships that are so essential, especially at the adolescent level, middle school and high school. We feel that by starting with ones at each middle school and high school, they could also then go to the elementary schools in the afternoon because both schools get out, the high schools get out early. So there could be that participation at the elementary school, starting at, say, 2:15. They're still over, they're still over an hour of school at the elementary schools. The thing is, again, the armed officer, again, is maybe a way of demonstrating some sense of safety, but it really doesn't get at the culture and climate, which is so key in these matters.
Yeah, good.
Can, I understand obviously the difference, but for this resource officer not to be just an armed guard and have those other qualities to deal with kids and be, is there, is there special training for that?
Yes.
And is that what makes the cost per person more expensive?
No, this is the average cost of a police officer.
Regardless if they have that training or not?
Correct. That's the way, we were, we were given this number through the police department and we discussed that. But they do offer, there is training for the SROs and speaking with other districts and having come from a district, and I know, been in several districts that had them, there is ongoing training that's provided. They do, again, their involvement in the school district, in the school itself, they get to know the students very well. A lot of the issues that occur in schools that have violent outcomes are because of the relationships and not getting the insight on a situation prior to it occurring. And this is another layer to support that. The ALIS training, again, you've heard a little bit about this. This is training for our staff in how to prepare for, in the event of an intruder, first thing having, using good judgment, but then knowing how to best act in terms of meeting the safety needs of the students that they're with at the time. This is a high recommendation of our administrative team. We were, as I've shared before, we were looking at this in the fall. This was gonna, something that was going forward next year regardless, but we wanted to make sure that everybody knows that this was on our radar and this is something that will be happening in the fall. So it's not an additional request, it's just putting it out there so that we're being fully transparent. Master key system, we've been changing the locks, as you all know, many people have been on the board or following along with our strategic plan. There have been several projects that have been changing in different buildings' locks out because some doors are older than others. So that's been an ongoing process. This would be, bless you, this would be to finish that off in the areas. Again, they're important, but to be honest, it's not a high priority in the sense that if a person is going to come into a building in a violent way, it's not gonna be, come through a door with a key. So we understand that, it's just a challenge. So again, not something that we don't want to recommend, but again, when we look at it, we want to balance that thought. And also, you know, I think the key thing is looking at our internal doors to make sure our teachers have locks to their classrooms. That would be the prioritization. And so that, that has been our prioritization and I think in most areas, we've accomplished that and there are some still outliers that Mark works on with his department. Elementary walkie-talkies, there are already, oh, I'm sorry, Ray.
I'm sorry, and the locks and the neutral doors in the school, they're currently, all those doors have locks?
Mark?
They all have locks, yes. There are some functions that may not be perfect for what the use is, but we've updated a lot of this stuff. We've updated locks through strategic plan items, we've updated locks through my operating budget, and this is really the tail end of it. That 56.5 is actually for a total of four different schools, four different jobs, usually $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 because most of the locks have been retrofitted.
Now, when the class is in session and the door is open, is it so that to lock it, they just have to close it? Or are they gonna have to physically lock it?
The doors are kept in the locked position and they're normally kept open with a magnetic device of some kind, which the fire marshal has allowed. Typically, they don't want doors wedged open because if you have, if you walk through a facility and you see rooms with door closers, you're not allowed to wedge those doors open. The door closers have to be allowed to work. They're there because of the fire codes. So this is a, it's a fairly minor retrofit.
So if a teacher has an open door and there's either a drill or an actual vent, all the teacher has to do is shut the door and it locks?
That's correct.
They don't have to make an additional?
No, they do not need to go out into the hallway to, you know, lock it with a key. Either the doors are already locked and secured or they can be locked from the classroom side of the door.
When they enter first thing in the morning, they unlock it, does it just lock automatically unless it's open or do they?
Not necessarily. It may not be automatic.
So they have to physically lock it?
Yeah, with the key from the inside. Yep. The original issue on this was, most teachers did not feel comfortable going out into a hallway to lock a door, you know, once a lockdown was called. But there's, again, there's two trains of thought on that also because quite often, teachers need to go out in the hallways to make sure that there are no students left behind. We've seen that happen in drills, so we're well aware of that situation also.
The next one was the walkie-talkies. The playground aids already have walkie-talkies. This is not to give the first one to every playground aid, this is just to add to it and that we've gotten requests from principals, this is where this came from, at our elementary school. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's why it's such a small number, too, a small amount. We just need to make sure that we get the licenses for the earwaves, the band, that they're gonna be using. The additional cameras, this is a project that's been ongoing. This is a large project throughout the district. I know our administrators always are looking for this because it helps them. It might not necessarily help them in a situation like this, but it helps them in every other daily situation that occurs with a student who might be not making the best decisions in the hallway or, you know, outside of school, wherever it may be. So we've continued to add cameras, I mean, from having none when I first arrived to where we are now. If you go into any of our offices, you see the multi-monitors, the double monitors in many of the high schools because traditionally, they have the most cameras and the middle schools have the second level because they have the largest square footage, those two levels, and then the elementary have lesser. This would be to continue to increase it. We did put this in for a security bid, a security grant, two years in a row, or two years ago, rather, and we received only partial funding, which that allowed us to do the blue lights, which I have shared with all of you, when lockdowns are called, the blue lights going on in sections of the building that are allowed, like the cafeteria or the gymnasium. You sure?
Going back, if you don't mind, to the walkie-talkies, can, the way our walkie-talkies are set up, can somebody buy a walkie-talkie and adjust to that frequency so they can hear what's going on?
The, the, the walkie talkies that the town is going to purchase?
Yeah, that's different.
Are much more advanced. The ones that, the ones that the schools typically have, yeah, they can be listened to on a scanner or with the same, you can buy the same radio and put the same chip in it, yes.
Yeah, the town ones, those are the ones that are going to be a separate channel that the town had to apply for. They expanded the channel. And that's going to be a direct communication to the police department or fire department or public works on a separate bands that were, are secure bands.
So the ones that they use now, could we pass down to the elementary schools for their, to use on the playgrounds?
Oh, well, the ones at the high school, the other, the walkie talkies that I just spoke about, the ones that are being bought by the town.
Right.
Very limited quantity.
Oh.
Very limited quantity for each school. So there's designated, like administrators will just have them.
Got it.
But.
So they still need their other walkies throughout the?
Correct.
Trying to repurpose?
No, I totally, it was one of those challenges. We were, Dominic and I were at that meeting and we're trying to work that too. There might be down the line when training occurs and there's a little bit more understanding, so we will definitely keep that in mind. But at the first phase, it appeared that we needed the double walkie talkie system. They don't, they want to be cautious as to how the new system is being used. Which I understand. So the additional cameras, any questions on that? The window film was what we were just talking about, not as part of that project. That was a glaze that was actually going to be added to the windows. This is a film that oftentimes, one of the vendors, one of the many vendors is three M. Makes an aftermarket film that could go over windows. Again, this cost here for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, estimated cost, is for just egress points. So front entrances, back entrances, those points. If we were to do the whole first floor of windows plus the egress, it would be at least a million dollars, if not more, at all the schools.
So this is the laminate he was talking about?
This is the laminate, yes. The windows in the project as an alternate was an actual glaze. Which is a little different.
So does adding those window, potentially those window films, does that do anything to your warranty on your windows or in dollar doors?
If we did it after new windows were installed, yes, it could affect the warranty.
So that's important to know, potentially. It could affect the warranty.
Correct. The, the seals on glass windows and door lights, I, I think maybe as much as ten years. So there is some, there is some downside to doing that.
What's the differ?
Yeah, go ahead.
What's the difference between, what's the big major difference between this window film and the, the other?
The glass companies want to sell you the windows with that option installed. That's the main difference. So by them avoiding warranties, it gives them more business.
But otherwise, it does the same thing?
Does the, does the same thing.
So significantly cheaper.
Correct.
For sure.
Any other questions at this time? All right. Next one, the additional panic buttons, this came out at the, at the town forum. These would be hardwired, the first ones, and this would be allocating an additional quantity to each building based on recommendations by the principals. So we've kind of reached out to them and asked them, in most cases, these would be hardwired, about five additional or so, depending on the building and the size. The next item was the pendant panic bu, oh, I'm sorry.
Currently, do we have panic buttons?
Yes, in all of our schools.
And are they pretty much standard where they are? So if somebody like?
Yes.
Is there one like, does a greeter have one now currently?
The greeter does not have a panic button because there's not a hardwired location for it. And you, where our greeters are, you probably wouldn't want to put a hardwired panic button. That's why, well, because it would be out in the public area. Which potentially could have more opportunity to be pushed inadvertently. Again, that's what our principals are concerned about. Our principals are more in line with the second item on here, which is the pennant, pendant panic buttons. Which are the wireless, kind of the ones that you'd wear around your neck, so they could give a greeter one there. And then they could turn it in at night, or they could give it to an athletic director, or they can give it to a band director when he or she is on stage. They could, they're more mobile. It's like, like Rock Hill and Cook Hill in the pods. Giving, you know, the elite teacher or, you know, the pod leader a, a one, rather than having one installed in every classroom or every pod. There's just a concern on the part of the administrators, which we even just heard this afternoon, that there might be a concern about students inadvertently pushing it. Or maybe not inadvertently, pushing it. I was going with inadvertently. But they were, so that was why the pendant, and this came up with our teachers, the pendant ones, bless you. The pennant one came up from our teachers. So this would be, what was the, the quantity that we were estimating, do you recall? Okay.
For the pendant versus the panic?
Yeah, the pendant, I think we had, we had tried to, with the administrator's support, they kind of gave us an idea of how many they would need if they were to dole them out appropriately. And we really focused, you know, the larger quantity, of course, would be at the high school level.
It was ten, ten per elementary school and twenty for each middle school and twenty for each high school.
And that's for the pendant?
Yeah.
So do, do that again?
So ten for each elementary, twenty for each middle school and twenty for each high school.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is the place to bring it up, but with the greeters and security, and I was asked this question. Do they have a, in other words, they're in the first line, if a guy's coming through the door, he's coming, and I don't want to say this cynically, but he's the, he's the first casualty, the greeter. Do we have a system in place of what he should do exactly if he sees one? Does he just get up and run, as he would?
They're supposed to, you know, again, the first, the first thing we try to explain to all of our staff is use their best judgment. So, you know, again, the first thing is they're going to try, they have a walkie. So we want them to obviously use the walkie to notify the main office and then use their judgment. I can't, depending on what's happening and what time they have to respond, of course, we want them to take care of themselves. And I do know that when there is lockdown drills, when there are lockdown drills, they are identified by the administration. Building administration would do this with their greeters, not central office. This would be a building principal or assistant principal who's been assigned to security in the building to come up with that plan. So they would help the, the greeter determine what's the best location for the individual. I know the greeter at Lyman Hall goes into the main office, because I've been there when that's happened. I believe the greeter at the back entrance goes into the cafeteria. I knew it was either gym or cafeteria. Sheen, I think one goes into the auditorium. And then I think the other one goes, goes into the main office.
Now, these, these panic pendants that they're going to have, if he pushes it, is it going to identify to somebody what location pushed it?
It would just be a generic location to the school. Because that's what our panic buttons right now are. They don't say which part of the building. They would just be to bring everybody, that's the traditional approach. But it gets the, the police on board. And remember, when the panic button is pushed, all the cameras, the police can activate the cameras. So that was the point of that. So now that'll give them the location because they'll be able to pull up the cameras and be able to identify potentially where the situation is occurring. That was a key thing that Karen worked on. Karen Vayou, our technology director, worked on with the police department. And it was the good thing that, and I know we don't get a lot of credit sometimes at central office, but I do want to say, when we were planning the system out after the tragedy in Newtown, we purchased a system that had the expendability. Because at the time, there wasn't a desire on the police department to have access to our cameras. But we built the system out with that in mind, that someday that might, that philosophy may change. If we hadn't, there would be no way for us to do this. So I do have to thank Mark and his team for that process. And also our security company who assisted us in that. The driver's license readers, this came up on the part of our staff. That when they go to other buildings, they swipe the, the person who's coming into the building. They will not only show their ID, but they'll get their ID swiped. It creates a badge for them with their picture on it, with their name. But it also does a simple, a very, very simple check of the person predominantly in reference to the child registry, in terms of sex offender registry. Thank you. So this is being used in other school districts. Karen has done some research on this, so we wouldn't be the first district using this. So we would just want to make sure that, of course, we have all of our policies in place, because I'm assuming. But then when I go to ask my colleagues, sometimes in other districts, well, do you have a policy for this? When I think this would be something we probably would want to have a policy on because we are looking at people's information. I find that they don't. But I know our attorneys are aware of this, if we were to move forward in this direction. But this would be for every site, including, you know, our alternative high school arts program, as well as our main entrance here, and adult ed. We don't forget adult ed and all these things too, just that you know that, because they are an important site to us as well, and it's a very public site. And the last, and it's not on here for any other reason at the bottom, because it just fell out in the notes, but the metal detectors. This number, I just need to make note, does not, this is only for the device. And this is only for the device that you'd walk through. We weren't, we have to, and this again is just an estimate. These are not bid numbers. So I just want to clearly state that these are just estimates. We would have to look at, again, the second part of going through a metal detector is if something is spotted, you're supposed to get wanded. So you'd have to purchase the wands. We didn't get that far in the process, so we want to look at that. And then in addition, we're looking at not only the quantity that would be recommended of metal detectors, but the quantity of staff that would need to be there because if it were to go off, you have to have an officer there, an armed officer, to be able to address that matter. So again, the, the number that's represented on this estimated cost is just for the actual detector system. And not for the personnel that would have to be attached to those detectors. I have to say that this is not a high recommendation of our administrative team. Because of the fact that we just feel that it just, there's so many trade offs. And we understand that people coming into the buildings, we want to keep children and staff safe. But I know our administrators have shared with us several meetings across the district on how much, how many challenges that may present. The front entrance, getting students in in a timely manner. And also just, I know what we've heard from students, when we brought together students at the town hall, that there was the whole philosophical belief that, you know, there's that whole climate that comes from having to walk through a metal detector. So it, I know our building level administrators are not high on this one. I don't know if our, I really didn't hear our teachers bring this one up. I think it's come from, it's come from community. And I didn't want to lose it because I feel it should be on here. And I know that some board members have asked me about it, so I didn't want to not have it as a discussion point. But as I've kind of gone through, I've shared with you a little bit of where we are, we stand on each of these. But again, it's, you're ultimately the decision makers for the school district when it comes to this.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I, I would like to see us do a little more investigating on the metal detectors, get some more numbers, like how much the wands would be. But I, but I think whatever we do, we need to include all the pros and cons of the whole system. In other words, you need to have the armed guard to be with it, if you're going to do it.
Yeah, you can't do it, yeah.
That has to be part of the cost and part of the study or whatever. But I also think you, when you, you made mention that to have a metal detector or detector, or just say the high schools even. You have to take into consideration the amount of time it will take for each child to go through that. That means maybe school would have to start earlier and to accommodate that. And then you're going to have, you know, issues with buses and you're going to have issues with parents who drop off their kids. So there's a lot to this that a lot of people I don't think are thinking about, although I personally see the merit in it. I, I think we just need to do some more investigating and I think the public needs to know what sort of implications take place as a result of them. But show them we're doing our due diligence as well.
Absolutely.
And to your point, Mike, if you're going to institute something like that, as somebody that's gone to schools when my son played basketball, that means you've got to do it at off hours for any sporting events, any activities that are occurring. So it's not just the school day you have to consider. You have to think of all extracurricular activities that go on in our schools that would, you don't, you don't stop that for extracurricular activities. So you, you have to think about that.
I think we need to, I would like to see that us propose that and to get all that, all the information that it would entail.
And personally, I'm very against them. And the main reason is, I was at the state Capitol not too long ago. And I went through a metal detector. It was inside the building. I'm already in the building. If I don't want to go through it, I don't have to. If I'm, if I'm in there to cause harm, that metal detector doesn't mean anything to me.
That's a good point.
It has to be, it has to be outside the building.
Yeah, the legislative office building you are.
We got to build the room for it.
You know, in schools that I've gone through them, again, I, I think about, I, I get your point, Ray, but they're always inside the school.
Yeah.
That I've gone through, when my son played basketball, we, we always, they were always in, they were urban schools. And you were already in the school.
Yeah, I was at the state Capitol. I go through a metal detector and I said to the guard, I said, I don't want to sound slutty, but if I'm going to cause harm, why do I have to go through this?
I'm not sure you can have those outside.
Well, at Yankee Stadium, they are. I know that one well. They're portable. And they, they do sell them, they're on wheels and they wheel them out before the games and they wheel them out, you know, on different occasions. So they are, you would set them up around the perimeter. Because like to Ray's point, you're absolutely right. I was just visualizing going into the legislative office building and they are inside.
Yeah.
Probably because they're not portable.
So yeah, no, they're not portable ones.
That would be probably.
So just, just to share with you again, the reason, just next steps or for consideration, I have three columns here, short term, midterm, long term. Let me frame for you what I'm thinking about short term. Short term means tonight for us to be told that you would like us to finalize the numbers. And I would put a memo together for all of you by Friday. That would also go to the mayor and the town council, saying that based on our recent meetings with families, communities, staff and students, these are items that we'd like to recommend for purchase and implementation, or whatever the word might be, for the fall of two thousand eighteen. That's what I'm, I'm suggesting as short term. Midterm would be, again, we were interested in these items, but we need more time to think them through. We want to do more research, collect more data, with the idea of either the fall of two thousand nineteen would be our goal there. And then long term, and it's really not that long, we're talking about two thousand twenty. So giving us a little bit more time, making sure that we have all of our information provided. We could do have conversations, provide the layers of information necessary to make the most informed decisions. We'd also want to, and I did check on grants available, the security grants for the state have not been authorized as of yet. The grants for SROs, they had done them in the past. There was an offering of SRO grants last year, but it was for, under circumstances that particularly related to violent crime, homeland security and illegal immigration. Now, you could make a claim, additional consideration could be provided if you, you set up other focus areas. But again, those, there's no new funding this year for those just yet. The last time they were awarded was last July. The, the grants came available last May. But again, the ones, there were none awarded in Connecticut. They were mostly urban settings outside the state. But I'm willing, certainly if the, you know, again, I would have to have collaboration with the police department because they have to be, these are for sworn law enforcement officers. And you have to include, you know, there are obviously salaries. And it's a three, a thirty-six month grant period, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand per officer position over the three, the three year period. But you have to have different qualifications and so I will continue to look at that. But as of, as of this time, there are no grants on the docket. It said, kind of, continue to look at that on the COPS website, which has been the grant that was established. I want to say it was back in, definitely in the two thousands, early two thousands, because I know that's how other districts I worked in at the time received their first SROs to seed the idea. And then it became part of the district or community budget as, as a matter of course, of action. So with that said.
Yeah, Jimmy.
For the school resource officers, semi-related question. What's the board policy for having armed officers at current events? Is it the time of day or the size of the crowd? And does the board pay for that, or is that a police? And does the board pay for that, or is that a police cost? And do you know, well, you don't know, but could you look up what we spent, or what we spend on an annual basis?
Sure. Um, first question is that the events, uh, we've had, this has all been part of our security conversations now for the last probably two and a half years, because the state changed its regulations about requirements for large assemblies. So, we had to do all-new egress plans, and remember with the, um, the Powderpuff Games, we had to reduce the number of people at the different events. We had to do crowd control, crowd management, um, classes for all of our staff, that, um, they had to get trained, we had to get them vests, we had to do all of our, uh, planning, which is, is, again, a phenomenal activity done by our administrators and our police. What we have decided, that there are certain events that our athletic directors will go through their schedule with the police, um, and say, you know, when it's a Lyman Hall Sheen game, there's always a police officer. When there are large assemblies for football games, um, or large events on the field, there's always police officers. They always work in two, in pairs. They won't work just one officer, they work with another officer. And then we also have the ambulance and paramedics. Other events, hockey games, because they're off-site, there's always police officers, and that's usually dictated by the site as to how many are required. So, Northford will tell us how many police officers we need, Chilt will tell us how many police officers we need. Um, the other events, we got kind of a little, um, in, it got a little involved because we were, Leah, when, if we took the information, and when we read it, when we originally got it from the police, it meant that every student talent show needed a police officer. Every, you know, elementary talent show, every elementary production. And then, we had a li, a large meeting, the mayor called us all in. Uh, Mark was there, John Galick was there, because this impacts John, too, for Park and Rec. And we determined that, working with the police, they would help us determine the events that were, were needed, uh, where offices were needed. But we do pay those, those come from our budget. Um, the athletic ones come from the athletic budget, um, and when we break it out, and I could get you those numbers for you. Um, when you break it out, um, it, usually we try to cover it through the gates, uh, the gate receipts, or the pla, the play to participate, pay to participate, rather. Um, other events, that are school district events that require officers, that'll come through our general budget, um, and that's how we account for those. But anybody who's using our building with large numbers, we do, they have to reach out to the police, they have to make sure that they have the police officer. So, like, if you have a dance studio or something like that, that's responsible, that's a responsibility on our, um, building use form, um, so they contact it.
Silly question, though. Currently, when you go up to the, the, the camera and you show your driver's license, the, the, the guy inside really can't, he can just see that you have a license. He can't, it's not high-quality enough to identify that it's a valid license, or it's your picture on it. Does this scanner, is that scanner going to allow for him, for the public to scan it? It'll show up on his thing as a license?
Yeah, it'll show up on, they'll have a laptop and, um, most, with a scanner attached to it, so the person would first get, and gain accent, gain access by going through-
Yeah, they're in the school already.
Yeah, so you'd gain access to the building.
Yeah, that's the one they're in the school.
Then you would swipe it, the picture would come up, they would give you any alerts, and then, um, it would basically, at the same time, it would print out in a badge, a sticker badge with the person's name on it and their picture.
But that all happens once they ring the door?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, it's, again, it's, the nature, it, it's a difficult scenario. There are very, I mean, I'm sure there are schools that have been, uh, now built to have that all occur in a different location, um, but again, in retrofitting, um, our buildings. The other value-added point of the scanner that was brought to my attention by actually one of my colleagues in another district that just have it at their high school, um, was that it gives them a record of everybody that's in the building. Um, in the event that that person might not be part of an issue, but just might be there visiting their child's class, or at an event, and God forbid there isn't a, something that happens in the building, be it a fire, or something else, they have a full, um, manifest based, basically, of who's in the building, which is, is a very good thing to have. Not that the written one isn't good, but this is nice because you could access it through the internet and other locations. So, God forbid there was a building that had, um, something that happened. Oop, I don't know.
If I can add also, um, it will track how many times people have come to pick up their child or visit, and you could also put in alerts, like, um, this parent has no access to this child, so, which is probably a more common, um, type of occurrence we may have in the elementaries, for sure.
It also kind of knows, uh, if you've got maintenance, uh, like, outside vendors in your school, like, doing maintenance work or whatever.
Correct.
Construction or whatever.
I apologize, just that TV Land knows that was our weatherman calling already
Oh, no.
About Wednesday.
Y'all sat ready for now, or?
Sorry, just, just want you to know.
I just have a shot in my phone.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, no, please, sue.
Uh, and all this stuff we're looking at, especially the, the metal detectors, you said, and you, I agree, if, if somebody's going through it, there's got to be an armed police officer there. So, that means in the school, if we only have one armed police officer, they only can go through one entrance. And it means that any visitor that comes has to wait for an armed police officer to come to walk them through the detector. It just doesn't make sense physically to, to do this. We're going to have to, you, you go to State Capitol, there's four armed, armed guards there when you're going through, and if you tried to run through it, one of the four is going to get you. But down it, like it's sheen, you come into front entrance, s- a, a detector there, you gotta wait for an armed police officer.
Well, the recommendation is not just one officer, so that's where Mr. Vado was saying before, that you would have to, we, we have to, that's a further evaluation. We were, we didn't have, you know, obviously, this only came together recently. We want to make sure that we talk to the chief, too, because we have to work with our local law enforcement agency on this.
I understand, but it just-
But it, the recommendation is definitely more than one officer.
Yeah, and e- even if you've got two officers on guard, you have two, two, uh, metal detectors, they gotta be at that metal detector all the time. They don't get to walk through the school. I just, metal detectors would be great, but practically, I, I'm opposed to them, big time, because of the fact, eh, they gotta be, even the portable ones, you got a rainy day, eh, somebody's going to stand out there in the rain or zero weather? No. I just, I am-
I got Karen.
From that point of view, I'm opposed to metal detectors.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Karen, and then I'll get Pat.
Has there been any thought given to something like a transaction window, where the person is outside, you state your business, almost like a bank teller type of a thing? You give your license in, they can run it through their scanner and ascertain what's going on, and the person is not in the building. It can be undercover, you know, maybe in the vestibule area, and install that type of a thing. Just a thought.
Yeah, not, I, I, I think that what might be an, eh, more interesting thing, but I don't know how you would logistically do it, is almost when you go through the drive-to-teller and you have the little tube that you put it in. Putting your license in that and having it go to the person, because not every school, because when we did, when we first worked at, on all this security, um, several years ago, we went around and visited all the schools with the present police chief and the present, uh, the, not, not the present police chief, but the past chief, police chief, and the past fire chief. And the challenge was that not every school has a vestibule. Um, so like Stevens-
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be that, but just some kind of a transaction window that, you know-
The thing, yeah, and physically, I think it's a great idea to consider. I think we'd have to look at our buildings to see where that could go. Stevens presents a lot of opportunities or challenges, so does Cook Hill. There's no, you walk, once you walk in that first door, and there's really no window
Right.
that, so you'd have to actually build a separate, um, almost like a, a portable structure, um, in the outside for those two spaces especially, and even Highland, um, the buildings, again, and it's no one's fault, it's just we weren't thinking of these, these horrific events when these buildings were being designed and built.
Right.
But I think that's a good, that is something to consider, I, I, that we can look at further.
Yeah, that would be, and, and these, um, scanners for your driver's license are being used, I mean, I go through one every time I go to the Department of Developmental Services, and they, what made me think of it is that they have a transaction window. So, you do not enter, you have a small vestibule area, you have to pass over your license, they scan it through to see if there are any concerns about you, and if there are, you don't get into the building. So, that might be something to look at.
Thanks, Karen. Pat?
Yeah, um, I don't know if it's, maybe Mark would, uh, know this. Our, uh, exterior doors, um, do we have, um, have them wired in so we know if that door was, okay, yeah, 'cause we used to have that problem, you know, my, where I used to teach, students would actually, not, you know, was anything devious, whatever, they would let people in.
Yeah, that was one-
Thinking that would make the whole thing with metal detectors moot point. I could walk through, go down the other end of the building and open it up.
Yeah, that was the, that was one of the first tasks we did, um, with the first round of, uh, safety money. That, and the buzz-in systems that we had not already previously installed for, as well as the camera system. That was all bundled in that first round of money, um, right after, when it, well, when it was first available.
Uh, and one last question, the, okay, so, somebody comes in, a vendor or anyone, you know, an adult, so we know they're in the building, um, what happens when they leave? I mean, do they have a sign-out sheet and everything, so we know that they leave the building?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I just want to make sure.
And I don't, I, I know the schools that I've gone to that have had the, um, ID badge, that you have to turn the badge back in.
Exactly, right.
So, you turn the sticker back in, and they kind of keep record.
Mike?
I'm, I'm, I want to refer to, uh, the comments that Ray made about, first of all, the license, whether you can see it. Is that true of every camera in this school system?
I don't bu, I, I think that there's varying capability, because I've, I've actually used it when I was, um, in one of the offices over the last few weeks, um, and you can read it. I mean, yes, you have to look closely, don't get me wrong, um, but it, it's, 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 again, it's the user, the person at the other end has to be making sure they're vigilant also. Um, and I think what ends up happening, and I think it happens where many of us go, even if it's not just a school, they see a face relatively frequently, maybe there's not as much diligence, not that they're look, not looking to do what they need to do, but there's a familiarity. Um, but I know they do ask for them. I have to say that our clerical staff always ask for them. Um, they're very diligent in that regard, we have amazing, they've, they've stepped up to the plate. Um, and I just think that, you know, again, I think some of them, there is a glare that we've tried to work on because of the sun. I know we've had that, that question brought to us, um, but I know they do use them, and I know they-
My question would be, uh, do we just need better quality cameras, perhaps? Is that, is, is that an issue? You know?
A, a system to actually scan, meant to scan those documents, will give you a nice, crisp, clean picture with no distortion.
Well, I wonder, I just have a one, I have a question, just a wondering, and, and this is something that I don't know if other districts have done, but, and it'll probably cost more money, so just bear with me. But could you put the scanner next to the buzz-in system, where they, there's a cover, they have to lift it up, and they scan their ID before they enter the building right there?
I, I believe you can, I have to, I would have to get pricing.
I mean, because that would be-
That would alleviate your concern.
Because then I don't need to build a vestibule. Uh, because I'm concerned about that, no offense, but-
But this is a work in progress, so when you start talking about these things, you think of other things.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking the egress for the little person in the ticket booth, um, that the fire marshal would not be for.
You, you, you should be able to get the clarity that your phone gives you easily.
Yeah, on those, the scanners that they have, those are incredible. So, maybe we look to put the swipe, if, if it's possible. And I, I have never gone to a school where we swiped outside, uh, but they're probably out there. Um, I know I was in Shelton, and we had to go inside, and I was in another school.
Branford, I've been, Manchester, I've been.
I, I really believe, I, I know there are costs involved in this stuff, and, you know, and none, nothing is a hundred percent safe. However, I think it's, 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 after all the events the last couple of weeks, what's going on in this country, I think we know that we have to put our money where our mouth is, and I think it's time to investigate everything on this list, and see what works for us, what the costs are, uh, what's, uh, workable, if, if it maybe, it can't work in a public school, but maybe we should try it. I, I think, if it means hiring more armed guards to make sure those metal detectors are enforced properly, I'd say do it. But let's first look at, look at everything. Let's take a good look at everything, what the costs are, and what the, uh, benefits would be, if it can be done, if it can't be done. That's my, I want to get that.
Well, and, and I have to be very truthful, and, and the administrative team, we toyed with, and actually, they're probably side, is surprised to see the costs on here, because we had said, well, we shouldn't put the costs on here, we don't want to make it about costs, but I knew that the first question I'd probably get from somebody was, well, how much does it cost? And so I said, you know what, rather than asking the question, having to go through that, and then having you have to write down every single one, because we would have gone through all of them, I would have made, I just said, let's just make a column, it's estimated, but I don't want, just because the costs are on here, and I think, I know all of you well enough, and I hope you know all of us well enough, this is not about the money attached to the items at all. Um, you can't put a price on the security of the children and staff in our schools. So, I only did that because I knew that I was going to be asked those questions, and I, I hope you all understand that. I just wanted to do that and be transform, transparent. This morning, when I was thinking of it, I wasn't going to put the costs, and then it was, as I kept thinking about this all day, I said, you know what, it's just better to put them there. And again, these are estimates, these are not hard numbers. So, don't hold us to these, because we had a meeting in the minds, and I actually have to say, Dominic, Karen, and Mark have really been the ones to pull the numbers of a lot of the, uh, the items together, so, and Dave Bryant also helped with the Alice training piece.
Jamie?
Right now, I think our policy is picture ID for entrance to the building, so this would be a change in policy, too, to move to a license.
Correct.
And how would we address the people who want to gain access, who are either uncomfortable showing a license, or don't have one?
And we would have to talk to districts, I haven't gotten that far yet. I mean, to be honest, I don't, I'm assuming that that's, the, a lot of these are in districts where there might be people who don't have a license, they have a different form, so I have, I would have to figure out how they handle those circumstances.
I would think most people have an identification card, even if they can't draw-
But I'm not sure if it has a, a scannable part to it. So, that's something that I would have to look at.
Again, Sal, they get that for motor vehicles, so it would have-
Right.
It would have-
Yeah, DME does ID cards, yep.
Um, you know, um, just, Mike, to respond to, I, I, I appreciate your way of thinking that, you know, you want to consider all, and, you know, without knowing, you know, the financial ramifications and, you know, human resources and all those components to any of these ideas or any other ideas. Um, I, I'm also mindful of the amount of time and effort of, that we're asking of our central office to spend time on these, and that's where I think if you, if we prioritize these, it might be helpful, so that you're not asking, uh, central office staff to spend time on, uh, something that we, as the board, perceive as a long-term potential idea, uh, rather than a short-term or midterm. I'm just, I, I want to be cognizant of their time, too. So, you wouldn't, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I think most of these things, we pretty much have a, uh, an understanding of what would be involved. I think something like metal detectors takes a little bit more-
Definitely.
And we could ship by-
I, ju, just to prioritize their time.
Yeah.
That's more why I'm focused, if anything.
I mean, like, there's nothing we have to learn about additional cameras.
True, true, but you're asking, you're asking for hard numbers, and so that means people have to spend time on saying exactly how many cameras are needed, say, at each school, what would be those locations, and then, you know, what, what are we talking about? You know what I'm saying?
The camera-
So, there really are, for every single item, well, except for-
What the names are going to-
Well, and that's fine, I'm not opposed to that, but I just want to prioritize these-
The camera, I have to be honest, um, telling all truth, the camera one is pretty easy, because we've had this proposal together for a while, um, and we keep putting it forward for the bids, and it's part of the strategic plan, so that one, I'm, I think we're fairly confident, the principals have definitely weighed in on that one, um, and continue to-
I just, I'm just, I just want to try to balance it out for people's time, that's all.
There are some that are a little bit more nebulous, but.
Any other questions? So, are you looking, Dr. Menzo, for us to give you a sense of prioritization for short, mid, and long-term at this point?
That would be the, that would be the goal, and then, so we would have a conversation about that now, and then after public comment, then you could take action on the, the two items. So, if you want to have just kind of recommendations about short-term, midterm, long-term now, you're not taking action on that until after public comment.
Right, so, I don't know, do you want to go item by item and just get a sense from board members how they perceive them to be short, mid, or long-term options? Is that, I mean, I don't have a plan here, so I'll, I'll take any suggestions from board members and how you want to proceed. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
For instance, like the, the first one, we already have that in the budget.
Yeah, that's sure, that's easy.
And when you break it down, so, so that would be considered a short-term?
Right.
So, is that the flavor of the board to go through each one and just, okay, that's perfect, okay. So, mental health professionals, we would consider that a short-term, everybody agree to that?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Mental health professional development.
Short-term.
Short-term, okay, very good. So, safety software?
Short-term.
Yep.
Short-term, everybody's comfortable with short-term?
No, I'm not comfortable.
Okay, go ahead, Erin.
I think when, when kids are writing in class and turning things in, then there is, there is some onus on teachers to identify anything that would be concerning in terms of what they're writing. I'm not sure if drives are monitored, but I don't, I don't see that necessarily as an immediate expense to the district.
Yep, okay.
That brings up a question, is this the G suite? Will this do email, or is this just G drive?
It, it's priced differently, so you can either do just the drive, just email, or both.
Okay, well, then that, I'm sorry, I have another question then.
Go, go for it.
This is going to open a different can of worms. Right now, starting in sophomore year, all of our students need to have an external email to use College Board. So, at that first meeting, when they're setting up their College Board accounts, if they don't have an external media, external email, our guidance counselors are helping them set that up. And we do have guidance communicate with these students through external emails. If we had this in place, would it prevent us from, maybe from sophomore to senior year, allowing external email with the Wallingford Schools dot org accounts and being able to scan those emails? Would that be a higher safety level as opposed to guiding students to external email?
So, if, if we opened up the email externally, obviously, it would be all tracked through either the software or at least we'd have a record through Google Vault. But we'd have to make some policy changes, I believe, to do that.
So, yep, go ahead, Ray.
I, I just had a privacy issue question on that, but I think, I, it, it's. In my opinion, I think we'd have to look at privacy issues here, especially if it's monitoring personal emails. I, I just, I have a problem with that. And I, I think personally, I think if they, if they're on the computer in the school, they should have no privacy, but outside of me.
According to our responsible use policy for, actually for both staff and students, it is considered, if you're a staff member, it's a work product, it's owned by Wallingford Schools.
I would think anybody in any work environment has that expectation.
And looking at the students.
Well, they should, they're going to, they need to, yeah, they need to know that.
And we, we also, because I had asked this question of Karen, because other districts in the state are using it, we assume, but we would work with our attorneys, because now with the whole, making sure that we have all of our student privacy agreements set up with all companies, we'd have to have the vendor agreement. So, we have a set template of a vendor agreement for each of our, our programs. It's not in effect until July 1st of 2018, or no, it was actually January 1st, 2000.
No, they, they postponed it again, it's July 1st.
They keep changing.
Although, they're proposing additional changes now too. But with each software that we use, that student data is shared with another company, a vendor, they do have to agree to a privacy addendum, basically, for us. It's required by the state of Connecticut, so.
So we couldn't put this in place without ensuring that we haven't violated students' privacy rights?
So maybe from a logistics standpoint, and taking Erin's concerns, put it as a midterm, I'm just, with that.
I'd like to see it expanded to get the price for both the drive and the email, because this is just for the drive?
No, that, that is a price for both.
Oh, this is for email too, okay.
Estimate. Oh, no, wait, that one, yeah, that's an estimate. So I, I just need, I'm not sure I have a board flavor on this, where, where the board members.
Midterm.
Mid, is, is that a comfort level for?
I'm still with, there's bullying issues that I think could really be a comfort.
I'll tell you what, you want to leave this and let's come back to it, at least, or? Okay, well, let's, let's hold off on that one. School resource officers?
Short.
Short? Everybody's comfortable? I mean, that's been in our strategic plan budget for the last three years, frankly, so that isn't a new item.
I hope everybody would be comfortable with that one.
Yeah, okay, good.
So we're short on that?
Yeah.
Short on that, yes. Alice training?
Short.
Short, I think you already planned on that for this fall.
We have, we have already.
Coming fall. Master key system?
The master key just allows for you to access all buildings with one key?
No, the, the, each building is different, there's, like I said, there's four jobs involved, and they're all, they're all different, for whatever reason, different hardware. But typically, when we do install new hardware, we make sure that it's part of our master system. You know, we, we have a, we have an excellent master system, but not every school was retrofitted. When they renovated, they didn't necessarily use our master system. So, we've been, we've been updating to Schleg Primus, which is absolutely the best security you can have, because the only, the only person in this district that can authorize a key to be duplicated is myself.
So what, what's in our strategic plan that we identified for this upcoming budget? That had some master keying in it, but is this beyond that, or in addition to?
This, this came from the strategic plan.
So it's in our budget for a strategic plan, so I guess that answers the question, there is a short-term?
It is short-term.
Okay, very good. Walkie-talkies?
Short-term, that's eight thousand dollars, short-term.
Again, that's a budget estimate, just keep in mind, but, everybody comfortable with a short-term there?
More, more people that have walkie-talkies, especially when they're outdoors, you can't have enough.
Just want to make sure everybody, I want to make sure board members are heard. Additional cameras?
Can I ask a quick question? What percentage of the high schools are covered by current cameras?
You mean, so is that inside or outside?
I, I don't have that information, and I certainly wouldn't guess at it, but it's minimal, because the initial camera installations were meant to pick up people coming and going. So there's footage outside, footage inside. Typically, the rest of the buildings don't have cameras. It's the, it's the egress points that are monitored. And that was done because we were advised to do it that way by the FBI and the state police. Mainly because cameras don't stop things from happening, but they certainly help determine the end results.
My understanding is that not all the halls are even covered.
That's correct.
Yes.
For it to be effective, if I hit the panic button and the cameras go on and the police are looking, if they don't have the halls, what's the sense in having the cameras?
When we first did it, again, we were, we're, it's been constantly evolving, we've, we've added cameras now a couple of times when we've been able to get the grants and through the budget. The principals initially identified their, their areas that they felt were most necessary, because they were either having the most concern about blind spots in the building, where there weren't teachers there all day, because there's some areas of a school that there's classes in them, certain parts of the day, but not other parts of the day. So, that's how they established it, the principals really came up with the priorities, and then we've added from there. So, I know this is a priority of our, our building principals across the district.
It has to be, I mean, if we don't know what's going on in the halls, then we, we, nothing's there, so I would say it's short-term.
Could, could you say short to midterm? I mean, the potential of not being able, logistically, to get it all done as a short-term, is that a compromise there?
I think that's been our approach, that we, every time we get a little money that we could put towards this, or through the strategic plan, that's what we've done, so it's chipping away. This was a much larger number two years ago, so it's been increasingly decreasing. And again, we built the system, said it's expandable, so it's not where we have to add a tremendous amount of head-end.
So it's kind of ongoing in a way, yeah, go ahead, Karen.
What is the typical price per camera?
You got me, I don't, I don't remember that, but I'll, I'll get that for you, Karen.
That's fine, that's fine.
There's, there's more than just the camera costs, though, there's software updates involved in all this.
So, it, how do you, go ahead, Erin.
Actually, that was for the panic button.
No, Erin, did you?
I think that there was the, there was that piece that was in the budget that was updating the servers for the security cameras. So, that, but that was removed, so you'd have to think about adding that in, is that right?
There was a piece of it.
I, I kind of see this as short to mid, I, I think, I don't think that, I, I don't know how, I, I think it's an ongoing that you kind of chip away, but, yeah, go ahead, Ray.
One of the big, one of the big concerns I think everybody has is bandwidth. And we, if we're going to add cameras, we, we would have to up our bandwidth. We don't have the, I think we're pretty close to maxed-out bandwidth-wise right now. Doctor?
I'm sorry.
I'm talking bandwidth, where, where are we on bandwidth now?
So, actually, all our schools are connected back to our hub, which is Sheehan, all through fiber, either one gig or 10 gig circuits, so we're actually really good with bandwidth. We've been using e-rate funds to do that. Yes, we're, we're actually in good shape there.
So if we doubled or tripled the number of cameras, we'd be all right bandwidth still?
We are, you, you tend to segment out the traffic, because you don't want that to, you know, interfere with students taking testing and everything else. But we do have enough bandwidth to lead us into the future, really. We can also upgrade our one-gig lines with very minimal cost, so.
Thank you.
So, board's pleasure on this?
Ongoing, so it'll be short-ended term.
Board members comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll categorize them in both. Window film?
That seems separate to me. More, you know, because it goes back to the window replacement issue.
You want to hold off on that one for now?
I would, yes.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
I agree.
What do you mean by hold off on it?
Well, it just seems like we have to.
To make a decision about placing it, because it might, based on, well, I don't want to speak for you, go ahead, Erin.
Right, so depending on what, what happens with the four-school window bid, what windows we end up going with, whether or not we feel like, like if we go with adding the additional security glazing upfront, then we don't need that at all.
But just remember that, that the glazing is only affecting right now five, four schools.
You would need a por, you would need a portion of the 220,000, this was for all schools?
Right.
So you would need it for eight schools.
Is, is this, can I ask you, the window film that's on this list, the 220,000 dollar window film, does that prevent bust, busting out from the inside also? Because that's a real big concern, especially when you go through Alice training, there are portions of Alice training that may indicate you need to get out from the inside.
Yeah, that, that eliminates that option.
That was our concern also.
That's one of the concerns with this kind of thing. What I, what I could do is put a bid together for window film, a three-year bid, and if you decided next year you wanted to install, it would already be in place. Or you could say, okay, let's spend a small amount per building and just do the front panels, you know, and that, that could be something in the future, I could put that bid out and get it in place, whether you use it this year or next year or the following year, it doesn't matter, at least it's there.
And I, I totally agree with Erin's comments, because that was my concern, it's been my concern throughout this whole process. And I was, again, I respect what the, the new frame of mind was in terms of the fire chief and his support of it. But that was always our concern, is that them getting in and sometimes our people getting out. And I, I just think it's one of those safety features, actually, I had this conversation with my mom on the way to school today, because she was, her school's just beginning to talk a little bit about the safety stuff now, and she said, did you hear about this film? And I said, yeah, she said, I'm nervous about that. And we had a long conversation, and the Alice training, you're right, I did watch the, the little sample lesson, and that would be in contradiction, so I'm totally on the same page with you on that one.
So at this point, do you, do you guys want to hold on that, almost put that in a hold column? Is that people comfortable?
Well, you could all, just, just fairness, I don't know, I wanted to share what Mark said, we could, it doesn't take, not that it doesn't take work, but we could put a bid together, just so we don't have to, it said you could have three years to act, to use the bid. So it could be on hold to actually buy something.
People will give you a bid that's good for three years?
Yes. So if we, I mean, it's up to you, but I'm just saying that it's an option that I don't want to discard or disregard, so.
Board's pleasure on that?
All right, yeah, do that. Like, like Mark said, yes.
Doesn't hurt, I mean, you know, there's no financial commitment.
Yeah, there's no financial commitment, but we'll put it in the, the off, in the distance for now in terms of.
So, in an essence, that's going to, by virtue of that decision, and that's fine, would be long-term, I'm going to say.
That's, that's what I think I heard, right?
Yeah, if you're, if you're willing to let that go for, right, so we'll put that in, get that one. Okay, additional panic buttons. And those are the hard-wired ones versus the pendant, so right now, we're just looking at the hard-wired ones.
Short-term. We need panic buttons.
I, I think, again, in response, I think short-term, I think the pendant ones, the administrators would be more to utilize than the hard-wired ones.
I like the idea that you can.
Because they can be spread out, so if you have like a field day, you could give them to people out on field day, on the fields. If you have a PE teacher out on the track, you could give one to the PE teacher. I think the hardwires really lock you into a space, I don't, I don't know, that's just, that's what I heard from them.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Erin.
Do they, if there's a medical crisis, like you have a PE teacher out on the field and a kid has a seizure or something, can you hit that panic button and you get medical? Well, the cameras would turn up, well, not, no.
Well, this, this one, we would have to check into that.
This puts a school in lockdown and.
Oh, geez, yeah, so that's, yeah, you don't.
So it immediately sends the.
This causes an armed response by police.
So it would not be.
Yeah, this puts, yeah, so you really are using this pretty, hopefully, never.
But the PE teachers have a walkie-talkie out there with them anyway, so they can communicate immediately.
And if not, they got a 911 on their cell phone, the sports especially.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, what, what am I hearing for the hard-wired panic buttons at this point? I, I'm kind of getting a flavor that you're not, not even interested at this.
Well, they would still not be in public areas, so, I mean, they're, they wouldn't be with greeters.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, again, we, based on what we've heard from our administrators, they're concerned about putting them in main lobbies, especially when there's other groups that come through that we don't have the same relationship with, that they could be going off.
Long-term, or you want to just avoid it right now and not consider it? I mean, you don't have to, I, I'm just going to play devil's advocate here. These, this, these lists was created based on the meeting we had, that doesn't mean you have to go with every single item. I'm not saying you don't, but I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here.
Are there areas that the, the super, the, the principals say, are there areas where they feel they're lacking a, a, a hard-wire, that they would like one maybe? Can we get that information from the principals?
I think that what we've heard from the principals, when we had our security meeting, because there were, there were schools represented, plus we've gotten feedback, is that the pendant would be more flexible, because they would assign those to the locations where they're not hard-wired ones. So that's why when we did the 10 at the elementary school, we were thinking of each of the pods at Rock Hill, at Cook, at Highland, and then strategically placing them around the building, that's where the number 10 came from the principals. And then, you know, obviously, expanding that as we went up. So, I think there'd be a redundancy, but I'd be happy to take a look at that if you'd like, I could see if there's any hardwired.
Well, I'm just wondering, I see your, your asking, estimate is double the money for the, for the pendant as it is for the hardwire. So I'm assuming that it would be very few hardwired, and mostly, I think, the pendant we would need right away.
Well, can I, can I just say something? The more panic buttons you give to people, the lot, the bigger the chance it's going, we're going to have a mistake.
That's a good point.
And I'm not even sure now that panic buttons are, if, are are necessary, to be honest with you, we have some, right? We have walkies all throughout the buildings. We have walkies that are now connected to the police station. So what's the difference between a walkie connected to the police station and a panic button that you now have in the hands of tons of, a lot of faculty?
The panic button turns the cameras on for the police.
Can the walkies turn the cameras on for the police?
And actually, we don't have the.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got control, did you, like, did you, and then I'll get you ready. Okay, well.
User error. User error.
I, I think that, you're right, I think you make a valid point, however, I do believe there are some people, like we said before, the person who's outside in the gym class, if they have one of those on, and they see something on the outside, you know, I think that would be a good thing to have on them. You know, they might see something outside that nobody else could see because they're outside. I think too many of them, I, I agree, I think.
There is a concern about that from our end too.
I think we could use a few, like even the greeter, I mean,
He has to.
That, like, you know, that person is right there, and they're, they're really open to everything. I mean, if they had one of those panic buttons, I think there's a little added safety to that.
Which the pendant would meet that need, yeah, yeah.
We can come back and ref, we could, if there's philosophical agreement on either one of these or a combination, we could obviously go back to our principals, meet, have a discussion further about quantity again.
Yeah, Ray, did you wanna?
Yeah, I'm just concerned, I, I don't know if I misunderstood you, but they currently, the walkie-talkies we have are not connected to the police directly. That's down, that's down the road, maybe a year away.
Um, no, I don't think it's less-
That's not gonna happen till the new system's in place.
Yes.
And that's almost a year away.
Uh, I think they're making progress, but yes, maybe, maybe you have newer information. I know that the chief was very optimistic about-
So currently, we do not have-
No, we haven't, that was our, we kept pushing that, and then the chief needed a new upgrade, so it all came together. No, that's, that was a good question. So again, I don't know where people, if I can get clarification from our staff?
Alright, you wanna get clar, alright, let's hold on that for clarification. But it sounds like, and I think what I'm hearing from the board members, is the value of the pendant has greater value than the hard. So that, so you wanna clump both those together as to be determined, or?
Well, what I'll do is, if we're, I guess, if, when it comes to the generic concept of panic button, does it fall? If I come back with data, cause I remember I'm trying to, in a timely manner, get something out to all of you by Friday, so that I could send it to the mayor, so I'm not surprising him, he's coming up with his number within the week, so I wanna make sure, we've only had a short turnaround time here. Do you want me to go back and assume that there's gonna be some form of panic button in the short term, and then just share with you what the principals decided and we find that?
That's fair.
I just want your, that's, I just want, that's what I thought I heard, but I just wanted to make sure I heard what's right.
So we'll, we'll, yeah, alright, exact determination, to be determined, but short term for whatever that may look like.
Not a problem.
Okay. Everybody's good there, okay. Driver's license readers?
Midterm.
Midterm, I'm seeing heads nodding. Good with that? Karen? That's okay, what, what you got?
No, go ahead Karen, I'll re-
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I just was gonna say, I like the idea of mounting them outside.
I do too.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna check into that, cause I think that should be able to be done.
Cause if you mount them outside and then the tickets, or the tag is printed inside, boom.
Karen, did you wanna?
If it doesn't do that, we're gonna make it do it.
I'm just wondering what the timeline would be.
Yeah, that's what we have to find out, that's my first, I, if, if they don't have it, we're gonna explain to the company it's a design flaw. And they need to actually now pilot it.
So get it for free.
At no cost.
Absolutely, yes.
I, I'm, based on this conversation, I'm gonna put it in as mid. Is that, everybody's okay with that?
Karen is very happy with that.
Okay, and then metal detectors?
Not interested.
Very interesting.
Okay, so where would you put it?
I would say, I would even say long term, as long as we know that we're looking into it.
I agree with Mike. I'd like to look into it, but you said there's a lot of things that need to be addressed first.
So long term puts it out, and that's, and that's fine, I mean, that's not gonna be-
Gives time to investigate.
Yep.
Alright, so we'll put that. Okay, so let's go back to the only item that we didn't have, and I wanna go through them and make sure we're all on the same page when we're done. Safety software, let's go back to that. And the thoughts of everybody on that. Any other questions, or, since we've gone through and had other conversations that come to bear to mind, yeah, Tammy?
I mean, I just, I come from an environment where email scanned, where there's keyword searches. If you just catch one child and see the mental health issue, you can't put price on that, that's thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not a huge expense.
And we're gonna monitor over five thousand students and staff, and staff. So, I support it.
So you would support it as a short term, mid, or long?
Short term.
Short term?
I like it short term too.
Yeah, I'll go short term.
Any other? I know Erin, do you wanna weigh in or?
I don't oppose it as strongly as, as they support it.
Okay, that's a fair statement, okay. So your comfort zone is okay to show it as a, a short?
Sure.
Everybody else? Okay, so I just wanna go back and make sure we're all on the same page. Mental health professional, short. Professional development, short. Soft, safety software, short. School resource officer, short. Alice training, short. Master key system, short. Walkie-talkies, short. Additional cameras could go short to mid. No, excuse me, short, I, I take that back. Window filming is mid to long. The panic, additional panic buttons, hardwired, and the pendant, we recognize there's opportunities there, more discussion. Something in the short term, probably more on the pendant, we're gonna get more information from central office on that. Driver's license readers, midterm, and metal detectors, long term. Did I represent that fairly?
Yep.
Okay. Dr. Menzo, are you?
No, that gives, yeah, that gives me focus.
Does that give you a good focus? Okay. So now with that, and I want to thank very much our audience who's been very patient with us. If you want to come up and make a comment or ask a question, I just ask you to come up to the microphone right there and just state your name and address, and come on up and state your questions or comments. And welcome. And again, thank you for your patience.
No worries. My name's Ray Francis, I live on Marie Lane in Wallingford, I have grandchildren in the school system. Heard a lot of talk, you got twelve people sitting at around the desk. You have no parent involvement whatsoever. I think they should have a voice in this, what they think they should be prioritized. I think that if you could put out a flyer to get a signature from a parent that gets an approval for your child to go to a picnic or an outside school event, you can do similarly the same thing by turning around and sending out a prioritize the list and ask parents, parents and grandparents what they think is a priority to the safety of their children that are in this school system. I don't agree with the filming, the film, the window film, but that's my opinion. I think that I agree with everyone that it stated, there's, you've gotta get a way out. I haven't seen anything on this list that has stopped that shooter from getting in that school, nothing. I can get in this school, I can kill ten people before your alarm panic button goes off, before you see me on a scanner, before anything. We have to do something outside the school before they get inside the school. And if that license, I really, I'm in big favor of the fact that you have a licensed scanner. I went to, last week, in the state, the Consumer Protection Division for my business, and I didn't get anywhere in that building without someone knowing who I was. If we can do that for the state and protect this, the governor of the state, you can protect my grandchild. It's as simple as that, that's a fix, quick fix, that I think that would, should be prioritized. You prioritize your priorities, let's start there. That's, that's number one, and number two, I really do believe you need more parental involvement in getting some decisions made. And not talking about this, Sandy Hook was five years ago. This is today, and what I wanna sit here, two, three, I, I am just as disgusted in myself for not getting involved because my next door neighbor happens to have been the third ranking highest officer in the state police at the time of the Sandy Hook event. I seen him walk through the night, couple of nights after, cause he spent most of two or three days without leaving Sandy Hook. I seen tears in the man's eyes when he saw what he saw. Okay? That was five years ago. The man still has tears in his eyes to this day. And that's what we're gonna do, unless this just is, if it's a meeting, it's a meeting. If it's moving forward, it's moving forward. I think you should somehow come up with a plan that we know this is going to happen. It's not short term, midterm, or long term. What needs to be done, is done. Plain and simple, and right back to his point, budget is not a, should not be an issue if you're gonna put my child's life or my grandchild's life next to a twenty dollar bill. We shouldn't have a decision, there should be no decision. So I'm very happy that I was invited by the doctor to come down tonight and to hear what's going on, but I do think that one of the things, cause I'm willing to, as a business owner, put my money on the line if it means that we're gonna get a metal, I, I offered one metal detector to start businesses off. I offered to go door to door, I offered to go to every business in this city to try and raise funds for these problems. There are school systems that I've been in, I have officer friends in West Haven, East Haven, Branford, North Haven, Wallingford, Meriden, and I could tell you right now, one officer in a school is not gonna stop someone from shooting ten kids. It's not gonna happen, cause it all depends on where he is. But that should be something that is done so that they're aware now. I think a lot of it's gonna be the fact that we have to let them know we are on top of the safety of the school. Like any deterrent, you gotta sign on your lawn that you have an alarm system, they're not gonna challenge going to your door. That doesn't mean that's gonna stop them from coming to my door, but it's gonna make them think twice. And this is what we gotta get out to the public, and this is something we have to get out, that you're doing something about it, and we are really making sure it happens. Talking about it and doing it are two separate things. I'll come to every meeting if you want, I'll do as much involvement as you want. I'm willing to take money I don't have out of my business to initiate any one of these steps, and I'm willing to give any one of you a side by side walk to any business in this city and see if we can't start somebody doing something. But it's time for involvement, it's time for our involvement, two people. This is sad, this is pathetic to me that no one gets, we need to let parents know there's more involvement needed on their part. And I think now is the time, not when it's over. I, I really do believe that we should start, get, start out with just literally a letter like you would to any student, put in this, pin it to your kindergarten child, your first grader. He's gotta go home, it's gotta be read, it's gotta be signed by the parent, they read it. Their involvement after the fact now is on them, not on the board, not on the educational system. It's on the parent who didn't wanna get involved. But if we don't give them the opportunity to get involved, then it's on us. So that's what I'm recommending, and anything you need for, from me, or my boys, who own the business with me, we're more than willing to, to do what we have to do. But again, I think you should prioritize your priorities here. And some of them, as far as I'm concerned, not, my granddaughter or my grandson not being able to get out of that school is no better than somebody coming and trying to get into that school, that kind of, and again, I, this, all this money means nothing to me, I don't have any money extra sometimes at the end of the month, but I do know what I need to spend my money on, it's as simple as that, and that's what we gotta start focusing on here. So if I can be in a, in any way, a participant in that, I'm here, I'll give anybody my number, I'll go to any meeting you want me to, and I think we start by getting parents more involved, not making twelve people make a decision on what is a priority and what is not, unless your children are on the line when that shooter comes in that school. Thank you for inviting me here, and I'm, I'm glad I had an opportunity to speak.
Just to know, all our meetings are public, so this is, you know, this, this is a, and our agenda is posted, it is a public meeting.
It doesn't, it doesn't stop you from putting something in that child's hand to take home. I can't fathom that with everything going on, that you're telling the city of Wallingford that you have a safety board meeting on what we're going to do to put their child in a, in safe hands once they leave their door at seven o'clock in the morning, that only two people showed up, we were grandparents, not even parents. So somehow the word's not getting out, cause I don't know anyone else, my son didn't know about this meeting.
Well, again, there's, there's two parts to this, that this is, and, and we kinda spoke on the phone a little bit about this, is that tonight is just setting the groundwork. This is not, when, when the next stage is, this is all the information we received from parents. And we did, we put out a survey, we did have the forum, we had about a hundred and thirty six people in the forum, in the forum. We had articles, we had reminders that went out, email blasts, blasts to all families. So basically, what we wanna do tonight is just share what we came up with.
Right.
So this is not, and I wanna make it clear to, to everybody who's watching this, and also to yourself, because I am, you know I'm going to be contacting you, as we already said on the phone, we had a great conversation. And I think, and I really appreciate it, and I think it was very respectful, and I think you see us as a team.
Yes.
The thing is that this tonight was just to get me in a place as superintendent with my team, because the time is near, that we only have literally now, I have nine days before the mayor makes a decision on his budget. So I had to get something in the mindset of the mayor and the town council to determine what they're going for. Now, we also have, just as another thing, another course of action, is that we, at this point in the year, we start seeing our unencumbered funds start growing because things do not come to pass, like teachers did not get replaced, or administrators, or whatever it may be. So we have some opportunity as a board of education, if the board chose not even to worry about the mayor's and the town council's budget, we could allocate some of our funds from this year, not for staff, because we don't do reoccurring expenses, but for non-reoccurring expenses, like the ID reader, or some of those other things. We could actually purchase them this year, outside of having to wait for somebody else to help us. That was my other reason of putting this forward early, to get people's thoughts going. But we won't make any decisions on that after at least two more full board meetings. So we're talking April and May. So during that time, what I always do as superintendent, once the mayor gives us his budget number, which will probably be either, I'm thinking the thirtieth or the second of April, March thirtieth or the second, I automatically send out email blasts to every parent, just like I've done throughout the budget process this year. And in that budget communication will be a list of items. And we ask them, and we invite them to all the meetings, the, cause we have committee meetings plus board meetings, and they're all televised. So we invite them to speak at those meetings and give us the feedback, cause again, no decision will be made probably until the May board meeting, which is usually the Monday before Memorial Day. So this was just trying to give us an advanced understanding, so that I could get my homework done in a timely manner for the mayor and the town council. So I, I don't, I don't want you to think that we're not looking for feedback. Tomorrow night, we have in this room our system-wide PTAC meeting, and we get great turnout. We get usually every single school represented by at least one parent. So we're gonna go through this list with all of those parent reps. Now, their job, which they do, is they go back to their school parent meeting, which then there's a whole nother group of parents who give feedback. So we try to, that's the model that we've been working on, so that was my goal tomorrow night, was to start off the meeting actually with this, because I, we start at six o'clock, so I wanted to start off with that, and, and just getting the parent feedback from the room. But I wanted to have an idea of where the board sat on these issues, and the board listens to that. So I hope that helps better understood, better explain the process, so.
And it's just shame on me for not realizing this goes, no, no.
No, 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 no.
I'm involved now because I, I've had enough, just in general.
Yep.
This, with, with everything to do with the government at this point, but this involves children, that's a problem to me.
And our staff members too.
Either I step, either I step up or I don't, and it's, and I, and I have to step up.
No, and we, and we'll be, as I said, once we're, we're ready to pull together the next meeting, to talk about the funding of this, and I will go door to door with you, you don't have to worry about that.
I'll be there, alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna offer to advise you as to who your rep is, your parent rep for your grandchild's school, because we do meet here every single month, and have for years and years. And I do have two children in the school system, so I do have a vested interest as well. The agenda was out over a week ago, I think now, for tomorrow's meeting, and Dr. Menzo's right, we'll go through the list and it will go back multiple layers to all of the parents. As well as this list was part of the, correct me if I'm wrong, the weekly update, which has been out, you know, and email blasted to anybody who signs up for it as well.
And we did put, and that was, we do have a security update on tomorrow night's agenda.
Right, six o'clock tomorrow here, and I hope you come April ninth. What is the town council meeting?
April ninth.
Public, please be there, bye.
At, at town hall, we're-
Mayor, town council, everyone, public comment.
And there would be a letter going out to all families about that, we just had to get the confirmed dates, and they were confirmed late Friday.
That'd be six o'clock on the ninth.
I usually wait till, I'll wait till next week to send something out to all families, just reminding them about April ninth, which is the public can ask us questions about the budget, and the town council's there to hear that, and then on the-
And the mayor is too.
And the mayor's there too, and then-
That's a town hall.
Later in the month.
And how do we get on the email list as a grandparent?
Well, you know, and you also now-
I could show them how to sign up for the district calendar, I, every time, something's added.
And, and also you- And, and also, you know my secretary and I very well now, so just, just give me a call. I return. So, thank you. Oh, the following one after that is not until the last week of April. It's Thursday.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. And that's not a meeting where the public asks questions. That's just a, a meeting for the town council to ask us questions, but the public could be there to listen. And then at the end, I think there is public comment, but it's more for the town council. The first one is for the public to really engage. The second one is for the town council.
But it's important for you to know at that meeting on the twenty-sixth, because really, the mayor makes, his, his budget is a recommendation. It's his recommendation of what he thinks the town budget for all the departments, including Board of Ed, in his estimation is as a solid, you know, a budget. But ultimately, it's the town counselors that make the decisions about who, you know, what each department's budget looks like. So what's important about that twenty-sixth meeting is, depending on the types of questions they may ask of us, you might get a flavor of where they feel about certain security items. And there's an opportunity, as a resident, to reach out to your town counselors, who really are the purse string holders, frankly. They can't, they can't tell us how to spend our money, but they determine how much we get. So it's, they're, they're, it'd be important, if you're really passionate, and I can see you are, about this issue, to get a flavor at that meeting about what, what the town counselors think are important in terms of school safety and security. And you could reach out to any town counselor at any time, and just like you can reach out to Board of Ed members. We're all elected officials. We're here to serve the community. So anytime you want to reach out to any counselors or board members to get a flavor of where their hearts are and where their priorities are, is your right as, as a, as a, as a member of our town. So, that helps, too.
Very good, thank you.
Sure. Okay, um, so I'm assuming with that, any other public questions or comments? I'm gonna guess not. So item five, possible action regarding responses to the four school window replacement project bids. Obviously, I need a motion, but I, I guess, do, I guess I would turn to board members in terms of, and I don't know if a board member has a motion in mind that he or she may want to make right now, but I kind of see this as a two-pronged, whether you want it as a base bid and/or the add-on of the security glazing as well. So I, I, I guess I'm looking for a motion from a board member in a second, based on that two-pronged. I, I don't know, not, like I said, I don't know how board members feel about that. So do I not have, yeah, I, I can, go ahead.
I make a motion that we accept the bids as given to us, including the ad security glazing for the window replacement.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Go ahead, Ray. Do you have a question, or?
Is there a second?
I don't have one yet.
I, can I just clarify real quick?
Sure, please.
That security glazing that's in this bid prevents EGR, it prevents us from getting out the windows, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I don't have a second, so that motion fails. Is there any other motion?
I'll amend it.
Yeah, go ahead. You want to amend it?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Ed accept the bids as given to us without the security glazing.
So base bid only?
Base bid only.
Okay, so I have a motion for the base bid for window replacement.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a first and second. Is there any discussion at this point?
Yeah.
Yes, please, Ray.
So we're accepting the bid, which is outlined in yellow, which would be diversity?
For the elementary schools.
They, they are the low bidder for the elementary schools.
But, but when you say the yellow, it would not include the ad security glazing?
Right.
Just want to make sure we're clear on that. Based on the current motion. Just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Plus, plus we're talking about Montagno for the high school.
That, that is correct. So it'd be for, do you want to be, or, I mean, but that, Erin, to clarify, that would, the bid, the base bid is for work to be done at Cook Hill, Highland, Parker Farms, Lyman Hall, and Lyman Hall Vestabule, I assume. Is that, is that, is that Vestabule part of Lyman Hall?
It is.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. So just want, and that's just the base bid? Are we, are you doing separately, or?
That's why I thought, okay.
You want to?
I'm fine.
All right, so just amend it, and, yeah, okay, fine, and I'll second even.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so the next item is possible action regarding the update on district security information. So based on that, I guess I have a fundamental question.
I think that.
The way it's written, I have a question.
Okay, go for your question.
Well, no, I think you know my question.
Well, what I was gonna say is, I don't think there really needs to be an action.
Okay, I don't either.
Personally, I think by you helping give us guidance, because I don't want to send the wrong message that an action. I just didn't want to not put it on there.
Right.
Just in the event somebody wanted to take action, because I don't want to take that, if I don't have it on the agenda, you can't do it on a special board meeting. So I don't, I didn't want to take that away from you.
But I want to be clear as to the purpose of what we're asking the central office administration to do is, now we've identified pretty much the bulk, our short term, that the goal of this is so that we can now present this to the mayor and to the town council as recommendations for safety and security for our schools. Is that a fair, is that, I want to make sure we're all on the same page for that.
And that would be presented differently, or separately from our current budget, we're talking, correct? So we would remove the mental health professionals from this list?
No, no, I just put them on here because they came up as items. So I would leave those in, unless people want me to do differently. I was leaving that, because that's already been a submitted budget.
Right.
This would be an addendum.
This is all, this is an addendum to the budget, like.
And I would just take that one off, and then also the master keys, but I just didn't want to, if somebody saw the requests, I didn't want people to think that they didn't, they weren't heard, because people didn't know that the mental health professionals were in the strategic plan budget that we present, or in our budget was presented. So that was the only reason why, Erin.
So Alice training you mentioned was already in the plans for next year, so where was that worked into, into the budget?
That would have to come out of professional development. So again, that was an area that that wouldn't go on to the mayor either, because that would come out of our, how we were gonna rework our professional development funds. So that's not an added cost. So the ones that we would be adding to the list for the mayor would be the professional development for mental health. We would have to look at that, because I think, in talking with Laura, I think we might have some funds for that also. So that one would be off the table. So we would start with the software, school resource officers, because we're gonna put that out there. Then the walkie talkies, the cameras, whatever we come up with, the panic button combination, and the driver's license reader. Those would be the new items.
Well, but actually, the resource officers are in our budget.
Well, no, they're.
They're not, they're not in our budget, but they're in our.
They were recommended, but to the chief, because that's the process that I have to follow. So I called the chief, like I did last year.
Yep.
Shared with him, and then he called me back. So again, I'm just gonna put them out on everybody's mind, that, again, that that's, that's a concern of ours.
Mike, did you have a?
Yeah, I did. I, I thought, I was thinking a little bit after, we discussed the metal detectors before. And we, we said long term, but I do, I remember hearing a couple of board members say they weren't interested. So now I'm thinking to myself, do I want the, the central office to look into this and do as we asked them to do if there are gonna be board members who don't want this and are gonna vote against it? I don't want you to do all this work for nothing. So I think at this point, I would like to ask the chairperson if she would mind taking a roll call, to see if people are indeed in, in favor of you doing that work for metal detectors. There's no sense in doing it if, if people don't want them.
No, that's fair. So.
Consensus.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess I would ask for, for board members to take consensus, and we can do, you know, go around, on whether we are asking the central, and make sure I'm saying this correct for you, Mike, that we're asking us, central office staff to look into the costs and the, you know, options, whatever, as a long-term item for metal detectors for our schools. Is that, is that okay? All right.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So I'm not sure where we.
So yeah, so it's, we, yes, they're still on the list for.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't following, I should have been.
It's still on the list for review.
But, but it is a long-term item, and I guess I would ask.
I'm not gonna start, we're not gonna start homework on this tomorrow.
Thank you.
We have the other ones to do the homework.
I mean, we got, that is gonna be like down the road, so we're not gonna waste.
But we're not, it's not falling off the plate.
That's right. We'll keep it, yeah. A very small light is on it for now, but it's, there is a light on it. Okay, everybody's good with that? Any other concerns, comments, questions from board members about anything? Want to make sure everybody's comfortable.
I just would like to mention, I would like to thank our director of maintenance for taking care of the men's room at Sheen High School. It was, well, it was very nice. Thank you for fixing it.
Thanks for sharing. Anything else? Okay, with that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.